Sir.
I can't hear anything. I don't know how old they are.
Hey, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll pay you back.
They make a lot of noise when you open them.
If you all stand, Mr. Shattuck is going to lead us in prayer before we get started.
Father God, we come to you right now in the name of Jesus and we thank you for this day. And we ask for wisdom tonight. Your word says that if any of us lacks wisdom, let us ask of you. So we ask for wisdom in these duties tonight. Lead us, guide us, and direct our steps in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Remain standing and Mr. Patterson will lead us to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and visible with liberty and justice for all.
I've seen it all. Seven members are here. The chair recognizes the quorum and we will begin. With public input, does anybody want to come before the council and speak on any items that are on the agenda? There's also an opportunity at the end of the meeting. Seeing none, we'll move on to the museum. And Sandy and Mike.
Hello.
Hi. You know the routine. State your name and address for the record, please.
Mike Miley, President Marsh County Historical Society, 1232 West Washington Street, Plymouth.
And I'm Sandy Garrison, Director of the Marshall County Museum, 517 North Michigan Street in Plymouth.
Sandy will be, and Mike will be presenting the quarterly report and some other information for us.
While Mike is finishing handing out, I'll go ahead and get started. So, nice to see you all and nice to meet you too, gentlemen. So I know we've got some new faces. So, pleasure working with all of you again. I just wanted to update you, some things, sort of recap the year. Twenty twenty-four really was an amazing year at the museum. We hosted seventy-five hundred visitors. We had the return of our Historic Home Tours. For the first time ever, we had a two-night ghost walk, which was really awesome. If you guys have never had a chance to attend the program, it really shows the museum at its best. I think it's extremely creative and uses all local stories, all local folks to present those stories. It's just really a lot of fun. And so for the first time ever, it was two nights. We launched a new website, which was the result of a grant project. We had recognition including the state's genealogy writing award and the Indiana Historical Society Best Project Award. We also had opportunities to collaborate with agencies throughout the county and beyond. For instance, that included Day of the Child, Latino Fest. We had brown bags in both Culver and Bremen in addition to the ones at the museum. We had an in-service in Bourbon. We collaborated with the Walkerton Historical Society. We participated in the Mayor's Months of Music. We hosted the Lincoln Highway Association for its national conference tours. And we worked with Tri-Cappa Uncovered Wagon, which is a fourth-grade education program. In addition, we created a long-range plan. And one task there was to come up with some original publications based on local research. And today I actually wanted to share the first of those with you, just some excerpts. This is a new book called From Crossroads to Communities: A Marshall County History. And it's by La Paz's own Dr. Don Balka. I don't know how many of you know Don, but he's an excellent guy. He's a retired St. Mary's professor. He's been on our board forever and he's a fantastic researcher. When he first gave this to me, it had a different title and I thought, that doesn't sound very interesting. But when I actually started reading it, I'm like, oh my gosh, this is really, really fascinating.
Well, he's a math professor, so that says it all.
Yeah, so we did ask him if we could tweak the title a little bit, so.
Good La Paz boy, Nicole.
Yeah. And the other great thing about this, and I will have copies of this for you guys next time. It's not quite finished, but get your own to read. But it also gives me a chance to show off some of the really wonderful maps that we have in our collection. The maps are actually some of my favorite things at the museum. So if ever you're in, we'll give you a tour and show you some of those. So Tori, would you put the first one up for me? There were originally only three townships in Marshall County. You might be aware of that. It was north, green, and center when we started. Those were part of our legal organization in eighteen thirty-six. But before then, the entire county was called Plymouth Township and we were part of St. Joe County. And as you know, we currently have ten townships, but we also have several that no longer exist. Menominee Township was established in eighteen thirty-nine. County records show that it was actually originally named Anadaga, but later that same year, it was simply changed to Lake Township. Franklin Township was named after the newly inaugurated president and it was organized in eighteen fifty-three. Similarly, there was a Pierce Township and that was also organized, but the order appears to have been canceled and no action was ever taken. The county has a number of towns, too, that no longer exist. And however, those seem to be less for having to do with politics than having to do with employment trends. Things like grist mills, sawmills, and the railroad. I've got another map to show you. And there's some little tiny arrows there. You can see we're pointing to some of the things I'm going to tell you. So Panama was a town that was platted in eighteen fifty-four and a sawmill was erected. Upon completion of the railroad through Bourbon in eighteen fifty-six, the sawmill had a perfect outlet for its lumber. But when the timber was gone in fairly short order, that village disappeared. Blissville, another town that no longer is, was on what is now the Plymouth-Laporte Trail. And here, Justice T.F. Stevens supplied travelers with what he called "the conveniences of life." But with the completion of the railroad through Tyner in eighteen fifty-six, Stevens' occupation was also completed. Sligo was organized in eighteen thirty-six and had the county's first grist mill. There were stores and an iron forge, but when the bog iron became depleted, the writing was on the wall. And even for towns that remained, name changes were not uncommon. Got another map. Pearsonville was named in honor of Ezra G. Pearson, who laid it out in eighteen fifty-four and erected a sawmill. But when the Pennsylvania Railroad came through in eighteen fifty-six, they decided that a shorter name was needed. And since the village was in the woods, Inwood was the name chosen. Bremen was platted and laid out in eighteen fifty-one, but was first called New Bremen. However, even earlier, a post office had been located there and the name of that location was actually Brothersville. And one last map. Lastly, Union Town was laid out in eighteen forty-four, but the name was changed to Marmon in eighteen fifty-one. But then in eighteen ninety-five, the commissioners changed the name to Culver City at the request of a hundred qualified electors. But they ran into a snag when the name change was presented to the United States Post Office in Washington. The name was rejected because there already was a Culver located in Tippecanoe County. But undeterred, Henry H. Culver, after whom the town was to be named, went to Tippecanoe's Culver and entered into some negotiations. That town was named in honor of Crane Culver and the citizens there were opposed to making any changes. However, after some financial dealings, an arrangement was made. The new name for Culver in Tippecanoe would be Crane and Culver City in Marshall County would become Culver. So I thank you for your attention this afternoon. And like I said, I'll bring copies of Don's book for you. I think you'll really enjoy it. It was lots of fun to read. And indeed, our communications manager was just putting some final touches on it. Turned out that Reverend Houghton is also on our board and he had some other things he wanted to tweak for Culver. So he and Don have been tweaking away. So when it come next time, I'll bring that along.
Quite a Culver name, Sandy. Houghton.
There you go, right? Yes, old family, for sure. So do you all have any questions for us about my report?
Max and Cucky's spelled differently now.
Yeah, yeah, it's really, it's really interesting. There's actually a lot of other spelling changes. Donaldson was spelled a couple of different ways, too. So yeah, I think you guys will really get a kick out of this, so.
Very informative. Thank you.
I will share that with Don. He'll be happy to hear. Then before we go, the commissioners directed Mike and I Monday to talk with you about funding for the replacement of several of our building's security cameras. We have four that are no longer operational, but would also recommend adding one at the top of our main staircase as that is a high-traffic area. We reached out to our service provider, who's Cottage Watchman, and have submitted the quote to y'all that we received for that.
I think you probably all know the commissioners ask us to bring it to you with a favorable recommendation from them. They brought it to you. My understanding was to figure out where to pay for it from.
Well, I think it's not a very big number. I know it's a lot when you, you know, for my checkbook. But I'll go ahead and say that I think you guys can probably get some support from me. So I'll make a motion real quick just to support this in spirit. And then there'll have to be an additional or something to that for the next, for the next meeting. And general fund would be probably fine. We have, that's my motion to support it.
Second that.
Okay. Is there discussion? Seeing none of those in favor of the motion, we'll say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you guys.
Thank you for your support.
I would just like to make a comment before you guys go. In eighteen fifty-one, that was Beiler who surveyed Bremen, if I believe correctly. That was my grandma's granddad. And I have, I believe, some of the original survey papers and also some of the cemetery papers.
Oh, cool. Yeah, I think actually when you get this, I think Don actually talks about, I recognize that name from reading this.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Pretty cool.
Great. Thank you. Thanks for sharing that.
Okay.
Sandy, you said something about Sligo. You're talking Sligo corners out there on seventeen.
I know. There's, yeah. And, let's see.
And Beato, where Lake Latonka is now?
Yes.
Yes. Interesting.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we, just quickly, we have friends, his family is from Ireland. And that's actually a state in Ireland, Sligo? And so we were just conjecturing that. We wondered if the folks who had settled that had come from that area of Ireland. I didn't realize that until, you know, we had learned that connection, so.
Years ago, there used to be a church right around that corner, too.
I think that's true in Blissville, too, right? Wasn't there, I think there was a church in Blissville.
Still is.
Still is.
Used to be an inn. That was an inn, I believe.
Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, next up will be Sheriff Hassel is going to give us a commissary report and some other requests.
Good evening.
Oh, good evening.
Hello.
Let's see. Under state statute, I have to give a biannual report of commissary expenditures and incomes. So every six months, you don't have to approve it, you just have to accept that I submitted it as required by law.
Okay. So is there any questions for the sheriff on his report, the last half of twenty twenty-four? Is there a motion to accept as presented?
Some moves.
Is there a second?
Second.
There was a motion by Mr. Patterson, a second by Mrs. Cox. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion to accept will say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
The second thing, commissary twenty twenty-five budget. I started doing this when I, shortly after I became sheriff. I also will be passing out the state statute that establishes the jail commissary fund. We have some new faces, so it might be some good nighttime reading for them. I come before the council, though. Under the state statute, there are eight identified expenses that I can use the money for without permission. But my favorite one is number nine. It says, "Any other purpose that benefits the sheriff's department that is mutually agreed upon by the county fiscal body and the county sheriff." So this is my out when the state board of council said, "Why'd you buy this?" Well, because it's in the budget. Well, it wasn't a budget. Well, because the council approved that budget. So I'll give you, pass this out for you. It's kind of a.
Oh, you made it small.
Thank you.
Wow.
You are literally upholding the law. You really are.
The twenty twenty-five budget request you will have to pass, approve it, so.
Sheriff, is there an estimated cash balance at the end of twenty twenty-five or now? Just, just out of the curiosity in here.
An estimated cash?
Cash balance at the end of twenty twenty-five?
We've been running right around ninety thousand for the last couple of years. Now, when we had the larger population, we were up over two hundred thousand. But again, we're selling more commissary, the more commissary, we're selling tablet time, we're selling telephone time. So the more people you got in there, which to me is not a good thing, but it does work well for the commissary fund.
Any questions for the sheriff? Is there a motion?
So moved. We accept the sheriff's commissary twenty twenty-five proposed budget. No second?
We have a motion by Mrs. Cox and a second by Mrs. Johnston. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion to approve the budget as presented will say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Third thing on the list here is the Lake Enforcement DNR Grant Request. We, when the grant comes out, they only give us like fifteen days to submit it. So we requested again what we did last year. I believe we asked for twenty thousand. Also, when our officers work, our officers work it, they get paid time and a half. But understand, all the money spent on that, on that program either comes from the grant or the Lake Max and Cucky Lake Association. None of the money's tax money, none of the money is from any other government entity. It's all just the DNR, Indiana Grant, and the Lake Association.
This is a standard grant. It comes before us every year. Is there any discussion on the, or questions for the sheriff? Is there a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Patterson, seconded by Mr., I'm having a senior movement here. Mr. Masterson, my gosh. Those, is there discussion? Those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
So if I may have the opportunity, I have a couple proposals I want to submit to the council for review. Like I said, I know you, it won't take any action on any of these tonight. I just want you to be aware and maybe down the road, you can make some changes to our budget, which is probably going to mainly affect the, it's going to affect the salary ordinance. So I'll go through this real quick with you. Two years ago, the nine-one-one fund went down to zero. And so we had, at that time, that fund was supporting nine employees. And so we pulled four employees out and put them into the lit fund. And that helped this fund now start building itself back up because it could support the five remaining employees in that fund. But as I talked to Tim earlier, you know, at the end of last year, twenty twenty-four, now the nine-one-one fund shows a budget balance, two hundred ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars. So I'm thinking, we have to submit a report to the nine-one-one board at the end of every year. And I'm getting a little worried, if they see that, are they going to start reducing their amount of money they're wanting to fund us? And it's unrealistic because the funds that they were providing us didn't sustain what we had. And that's because they have not increased anybody's payment throughout the year. So taking a look at that, our income in twenty twenty-four in that fund was five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. So that gives us a total of eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars to work with. The council has budgeted us to spend three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars, which is a lot less than eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand. My proposal is to move two turnkey dispatchers back from the lit fund and put them in, back into the nine-one-one fund. This would be with total benefits and everything. This would cost that fund an additional one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars. That's still not going to put that fund into negative at the end of this, at the end of twenty twenty-five. In fact, there'll still be a surplus. Did that on purpose just to buffer it a little bit. But I really think, looking down the road, as the lit gets transferred from the jail lit to the lit, we want to have a surplus there. So when we do the switch over, we still have money to operate on while the new fund, while the new tax kicks in. It's like you're not raising a tax, you're actually lowering a tax when that happens. So I thought this would be better to have a little more surplus in that fund. If you decide to move forward on it, the changes would just have to be made to the salary ordinance where you show two additional people being paid salaries out of the nine-one-one fund and then two less out of the lit fund.
So my quick math was if the revenue for twenty twenty-five was equivalent to twenty twenty-four, the beginning fund balance plus the revenue minus the budget amount of three hundred twenty-eight thousand, minus the one hundred and fifty-eight thousand is roughly four hundred thousand left over. Did you run a number calculation like that, something like that?
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah, so you probably have the liberty, well, the ability, the flexibility, probably the ability anyway, to spend more out of that. Because if you're concerned, we're going to get cut because the end of the year is four hundred thousand, we may have to get more aggressive.
Well, and there's another thing that we may want to think to do is, last, last year, we moved the, the fund for the, for the nine-one-one equipment lease, which is about ninety thousand a year. We put that into lit. We may want to think about taking that back and putting it in that nine-one-one fund.
Okay.
So I'll keep an eye on it. If that looks like where we should go, I'll, I'll be back.
Okay. What's, what's the protocol for this? Get, does the personnel committee have to get together and do a salary?
Not necessarily. If he's requesting that to be moved, that's just, if you motion that you would support that, we would get an amendment to the salary ordinance for the next meeting.
The next meeting, okay.
And we would specify the date on that to be the beginning of a pay period, so it wouldn't mess with our end or Matt's end.
Right. Okay. You would, you would have that for the next meeting, all those, those dates and everything? Is that what you said?
Yes.
My other question would be, what, what board is it that controls this budget or determines what you have? Is that the state or that local?
State, nine-one-one state board, yeah.
Is it through the treasurer?
Treasurer's office.
The treasurer of state oversees the nine-one-one.
Yeah. But they have their, a board that oversees specifically the nine-one-one, collect all the fees from the phone, and then they divvy it up to each county about, depending on, I'm sure, population. And then we get one special check like in October of any additional phones that were purchased that year. And they made more money, then they divvy that out to all the different counties. But they've never raised that monthly fee that they pay since long before I was sheriff. It's never gone up. It's always forty-two thousand something a year, a month, I mean. Do what?
Forty-two, two eighty-one.
Two eighty-one, yeah.
Okay, yeah. My math, I double-checked my math. And so you'll have four hundred thousand and four dollars in surplus if all those numbers are accurate at the end of the year. So again, yeah, we could, we can continue to move some expenses into that, so.
And you know we'll never, we never spend the entire fund.
Right, right.
So there's going to be another probably a hundred thousand dollar additional. So yeah, I'll, my next target is, let's see what we're paying out of lit for that nine-one-one maintenance and service fees and move that back into nine-one-one where it should go because it is totally a nine-one-one system.
And to be clear, it's, it's just not wasting money to increase the spending. It's actually moving the spending around so we don't lose it.
Right, because we are the ones that took the hit with the lit fund when we had to move people out of it, when the fund wasn't sustaining what it had sustained for, since I was on the county council. You know, it sustained those nine people. But two years ago, you know, as the employees kept getting raises, health insurance kept going up. You know, eventually you, you overstepped what you're bringing in.
So the sheriff has a recommendation to move two turnkey dispatchers from the lit fund into the nine-one-one fund, totaling one hundred fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars approximately. Is there a motion?
Some moves.
We have a motion by Mr. Masterson and seconded by Mr. Shattuck. Is there discussion? Seeing none of those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, sheriff.
And the sheriff had mentioned that he'll have to do an additional appropriation in the nine-one-one fund as well, since that wasn't budgeted. So that will also, Wednesday, a week from this Wednesday is the deadline. And that will be also be before you at your March meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And then I have one other proposal to have you take a look at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Several years ago, the Supreme Court of Indiana gave lawyers more leeway to deliver civil process through certified mail. And when that happened, I kind of been watching, we have two process servers now, and I kind of been watching how much process that's affecting their job, their delivery. And when, with the recent retirement of one of my process servers, I really took the pencil out and did some draw, did some figuring. And the need for a second process server just is not there as much as the need is for another turnkey dispatcher. For our main purpose of that turnkey dispatcher is a transportation officer. Some of the things that's been happening is, that's been really affecting us is the emergency detention orders. Okay, somebody gets evaluated by one of the hospitals and they've come to the determination that this person needs to be committed. And they get the paperwork to a judge. The judge signs the court order and of course, the sheriff's department's responsible. The judge signs the court order, and of course, the sheriff's department's responsible to carry out the orders of the court. So normally, the EOD, we took them to Pierston over in Koskawasco County where they have the facility that Bowen Center operates to commit them. In the past two years, that facility has been full. And our last year now, the, the emergency detention orders have been going to Fort Wayne. And it doesn't matter if it's 1:00 in the morning or noon on a Sunday, we got to find somebody to transport those people. It's getting also to the point now where we're taking them to Lafayette and we're taking them to Indianapolis.
Wow.
Because the facilities are full. I have reached out to the Bowen Center and I've pleaded with them to put a detention center at their new facility at Pioneer and 30, and it wasn't successful. But, so my recommendation again would be a change in the salary ordinance is that we move, we reduce a process server out of the lit fund and add a turnkey dispatcher into the lit fund. With all the benefits and the hours difference, work hours difference, and the salaries that are different, it will be an additional $5,873 to make that switch.
Is this for juveniles? Is that?
Oh, juveniles are the other one, yes. I, I didn't throw that in there, but second of all, we used to just take them up to JJC in South Bend, not a problem. No longer. It's all Fort Wayne now.
North Carolina.
And I believe right now, Fort Wayne's full, and the agreement that the probation department has is Hamilton County. So now if I have to, if we have to transport a juvenile to a secure facility, they're going to Noblesville. It's quite a bigger difference than just going up to South Bend.
Is, is that for temporary?
Correct, yeah, that's temporary. Usually, well, Fort Wayne can be kind of long-term, but the real long-term, we're going to take them to Logan'sport.
I have a question, Sheriff. What happens if your civil process server is on vacation if you only have one?
This, part of this job, I will be updating the job description to include civil process. In a turnkey dispatch, transportation's already there.
Okay.
But I will be updating that with, of course, it always says, and whatever the sheriff requests you to do. But I will update that with a, just a, that they will also assist in civil process. Also, in the past, if the process servers got behind, the road patrol officers would do it, would serve it. And sometimes they still have to serve it because sometimes you can't catch people at home during the day, but you can catch them at home at night a lot. So our officers know how to do it. It's just if they, if they need to.
So it's not an additional position, you're just transferring the job description, fair statement, or?
Do it now.
It's not an additional position, you're just transferring the job description, basically? Or no?
Uh, we'll be adding that to the job description.
Right, 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 okay.
So.
The transport, turnkey dispatchers doing transports is already in the job description.
If you're changing the job description, that should go through the personnel committee process because.
And we'll be doing that in April.
Okay.
Yeah, not a problem.
Get to it before April because you have to have the end of April. It's, it's open now, so you can do it now.
Oh.
February to April.
I didn't know that, okay. We'll get you.
Can this be moved over to the state 911 or can that, or no? Can this one be moved in that 911 fund or no?
No.
Okay.
Do you have that 5,873 in your budget somewhere, or is this something that you're asking for a general?
Um, I will, I will have to look because a lot of times that small amount, we can find it in the budget.
Yes, that's what I like to hear.
Yeah, okay.
So I just, I got to ask because this was my, my heart for the longest time, but if you have a juvenile basically at night and you get emergency orders, then that's when you're talking about transporting them out of state or somewhere else, correct? So you're having to call somebody to do that?
We, we have not had to transport one out of state yet, but like I said, we've, we call people out to go, take them to Lafayette, to Noblesville, to Fort Wayne. It's just, we do it all the time. It's every week. Every week it's juvenile, or EOD's a lot more than juveniles, but I mean.
Kudos to you guys because I know that's very difficult with kids and that's a interesting situation all the time, and I appreciate you guys having people that are able to do that.
Yeah. Like I say, JJC's full, Fort Wayne is no longer holding the beds for us. So they, last I knew, the, the judge in probation had talked to a facility in Hamilton County, and there's where we're taking them for, and it's usually short detentions for those places, like even a runaway. If it's a runaway, we've got to have the, the juvenile back in front of the judge within 24 hours.
Mm-hmm.
So, so it's a trip down.
Trip down.
Back, and then a trip down to pick them up and bring them back, yeah.
And you guys can't technically keep them overnight because they're juveniles, correct?
Yeah, we can't keep them, yeah.
Juvenile facility, so they're definitely emergency runs and you can find them.
Any other questions for the sheriff? Okay, and so the personnel committee will meet, probably go over the language of the job descriptions, approve it or, or not, and then they'll come back and that'll be the process? Okay. That's all I got. Thank you, Sheriff.
All right.
Next up, Health Department and Sandy Dunphy.
Good evening.
Just state your name for the record.
Sure, Sandy Dunphy. I'm the administrator at the Marshall County Health Department. I'm just here to, we applied for a emergency preparedness grant. It's a five-year grant, and this is just the renewal, renewal period for this year, 2025. It's a $25,000 a year grant, and we use that to pay half of our preparedness environmentalist salary.
Questions for Sandy?
I have a question that might be somewhat related, but somebody asked me, do you, do you have the capability of doing radon testing or directing people if?
We do have free radon test kits.
All right, answer that question.
While she's looking for support to apply for the grant, is there a motion?
Make a motion.
We have a motion made by Mr. Shattuck. Was it seconded over here?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
You're wearing your name tag, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Sheriff.
Okay, is there discussion? Seeing none of those in favor of the motion to approve the grant will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. I think that's it, right?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy.
Mr. Garner, he also has a grant request. Just state your name, please, and your title.
Jack Garner, EMA Director.
Okay.
I'm here for a grant request for the BRIC grant. I'll do a brief explanation and then let you guys ask questions if you have any. That's the Building Resilient Infrastructures in Communities Grant. I am still unsure how long that will be continued. It's one of those that was put out for climate change resilient infrastructure, so Mr. Musk might have something to say about that, but for now, we're going to progress forward with the grant. So I'm seeking, it's about a $10,000 budget that was submitted to the state. They've moved this through, through FEMA from the pre-application periods. Now, this is the formal application through FEMA. It would be a 25% local match, 75% from FEMA. It would be to put a flood gauge in Deep Ditch, which is that creek that runs below State Road 10 just east of Argus, which happens to flood quite a bit. It floods up on those county roads, and then it even goes over 10 in some events as well. So hopefully, we could figure out when that's going to happen, take some precautionary measures, get road signs out there. We had a vehicle get stuck when that flooded back this past summer, so hoping to prevent some of that from happening going forward.
So does the gauge, the gauge alerts you?
The gauge will just keep track. I think it's, the one that I've been looking at, it's going to report like every hour, and so I'd be able to go and look at the data there and see if it's rising.
You have to physically look at it, it's not telemetry that?
It'll be reported back. I can look at it on my computer, phone, whatever. It'll report back.
Is there any other history of vehicles being stranded?
I'm not sure, don't, I mean, I'm, I'm new to the position, but I know there was one last summer, so.
Mr. Grollick is shaking his head yes.
There's a car a few years ago went in there.
Okay, so. Are there any other questions for Mr. Garner? Okay, he's seeking support to apply for the grant. Is there a motion?
No.
That was a tie, okay. Mr. Masterson, got your name right, and Mrs. Cox have made a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none of those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion is approved. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, you bet.
Thank you.
Mr. Hildebrand. Please come up, state your name, your title for the record, social security number, bank account number, all that stuff.
Sure, I know, Walter. Good after, or good evening. Greg Hildebrand with Marshall County Economic Development Corporation here, just giving you an update on what we did in '24, what we're looking to do in '25 and beyond. Real quick, just some background on Marshall County Economic Development Corporation. Our mission is to expand and diversify the economy of the county and its communities by fostering investment in new and existing facilities and creating entrepreneurial capacity. Our board members, we have a nine-member board, and they are appointed by the communities here in the county and also the commissioners and the council, and then we have one at-large appointment. Our members currently are Ron Lee from Argus, Patty Kitch from Bourbon, Greg Miller from Bremen, Don Fox from Culver, Chelsea Smith from La Paz, John DeSalle from Plymouth, Eric Holspel from, is a commissioner's appointment, Laura Vervink is the council appointment, and Bill Davis is the MCEDC appointment at large. In 2024, we had 50 million plus in capital investment in the county. Most of this was for existing employers for new product lines and increased productivity. Over $9 million was added to the annual payroll here in the county as a result of these investments. Currently, our most recent unemployment at the year end of '24, Marshall County was at 3.7%. That compares to Indiana at 4.5 and the U.S. at 4.1. The average wage in Marshall County is reported as $24.12 an hour. That compares to Indiana at 28.9 and the U.S. at 34.91. So you can see we're below those. Some of the projects that we did in '24, SDC is a diecast company currently located in Missouri. They were purchased locally and are being relocated to Marshall County, estimated to have 25 employees. You've probably seen this building going up on Pioneer Drive out there by the zone. Bomarco, AK Industries, Oasis, BCI, Hardwood Interiors Design, Viking Paper, Zentis, all expanded their operations and their workforce. Shells Incorporated Bourbon finished the installation of their first 3D sand mold core machine. It has expanded their market and brought additional business. Look for additional lines to be, the building that they've installed that in, they left room for four more of these or five total, and in talking to the gentleman over there, it's really opened their business up quite a bit. American Container and Southwire continued their expansion projects that were started in 2023 that was ongoing. All points to manufacturing here in Plymouth received a manufacturing readiness grant from Canexus. That is a woman-owned enterprise, if you're familiar with that, out on Pioneer by Oasis out there. The South Bend, Oak Cart region is the number one region in receiving these grants. Marshall County, Marshall County alone is the number 10 county in the state for manufacturing readiness grants that have been awarded. We do a thing called the Business Retention and Expansion Interviews. This is second year of our ongoing. We changed the way these are done from doing them every four or five years and doing a random sample of industries to doing a third of all our employers every year, and so that every third year, we're touching base with them. This will be the final year of that process. We included several not-for-profits last year because some of our top employers in the county are not-for-profit. So in order to get an idea of what the hiring practices are there, we've been including those. The top five employers based on full-time employment in Marshall County are Southwire, Hoosier Racing Tire, Plymouth School Corporation, Culver Academies, and Oasis. Town attraction is still the number one common issue we hear in those interviews, and that's, has to do with that, that next level employee, you know, the introductory production employee has gotten a lot better. You notice our unemployment rates are ticking up. Employers are starting to be a little more selective in those positions, but what they're really hurting for is that talented employee that's like supervisors, engineers, accountants, things of that nature. IEDC, Indiana Economic Development Corporation, sends us leads from time to time. Last year, we received 108 leads from IEDC. Those are, some of those are for like the entire state, you know, that somebody's looking for something, or they may be just for certain counties in the state. But we responded to 15 of those leads. The vast majority of those leads are just not appropriate for Marshall County in that they are looking for either huge amounts of land, huge number of workforce, maybe they, something that just doesn't apply. We did respond to those 15 leads. Three of those resulted in follow-ups, and one did result in a formal incentive package that we're still have, is outstanding. We haven't heard yet on a decision there. Marshall County Career Innovation Center obtained a new market tax credit and has broken ground on new structure, and classes are scheduled beginning to remodel the areas this, in the fall. New areas of study are being introduced here in Marshall County for CTE students. The adult education is greatly improved with more GREs and technical training being offered. Workforce development for encumbered workers is also improving. Marion University and Cell College is a part of that workforce development initiative and has worked with local industry to develop a leadership program. Ready 2 also was in '24. Marshall County received 4.5 million in funding for three projects. The Bremen Growth Project, which was 3.7 million. Heartland Arts in downtown Plymouth received $500,000, and the Culver Community Youth Center received another $300,000. We also benefit here in Marshall County because the Habitat for Humanity, the three-county area all joined forces, and they received a $4.1 million grant. One of the things I want to make sure everybody's aware of, Ready 2 funding will not be available until after 65% of Ready 1 funding is dispersed. There was some concern that that was not going to be able to happen here in this region, but we've negotiated, renegotiated some contracts up in South Bend, and it looks like it is going to be able to take place this year. So what was feared, I think we've avoided. US 30 and 31 has been a ongoing process with the Propel. The final and third round of Propel study releases has been out, the final recommendations are being drafted and will be given to NDOT for their consideration. This has been a razor's edge to negotiate, weighing safety, efficiency, and access with maintaining, creating opportunities for economic development. The safest and most efficient overall solution will sacrifice the ease of access for large areas along the routes and have a negative effect on opportunities for economic development. Without proper access roads and local infrastructure improvements, many sites will be negatively affected. While the State Road 10 and US 31 intersection is not a part of the Propel study, it is an area of concern. To improve the safety at this state year's intersection, thought and preparation needs to be put into how the intersections on each side are addressed. As was illustrated in late 2024, the semi truck cannot cross at Linden Road, and that would abandon the ITAMCO if they would just shut that down. I don't know if everybody was aware that the ITAMCO had a truck that got hit by a train in late 2024. There was a million-dollar piece of equipment on that truck, and the GIS directed it down Linden Road, stranded it on the tracks, and the rail hit it. I've sent photos of that to several congresspeople that we've been talking to about improving that rail so that they're well aware of that happening. We also had two housing studies done in the area. Two separate studies were conducted in 2024, one for MACOG and the other by Marshall County United Way and the Marshall County Community Foundation. Both studies agree that additional housing units are needed. The MACOG study looked at current and future needs in terms of type, cost, and volume. I look at the inventory per se. Marshall County study looked at issues around affordability or barriers to finding housing, wages, types of housing available, transitional housing, issues of policy or opportunity. MCEDC continues to be involved in these work groups as. MCEDC continues to be involved in these workgroups as housing is a concern for increasing population and workforce. One of the things we're looking forward to working on going forward is the County Comprehensive Plan. We want to identify quality-of-place needs. With community engagement help, the plan will establish a list of desired infrastructure amenities that residents and potential residents are looking for when considering Marshall County. That trite SWOT analysis will need engagement at all levels from the public. What strengths should we capitalize on, the weaknesses that need to be addressed, what opportunities for quality-of-place improvement should be focused on, and what threats to the quality of place are we facing? We want to identify areas of economic growth, what areas of economic growth the community members want to focus on. The County Comprehensive Plan is an opportunity to be engaged and express what should be developed in the county. Often, it is easy to be against development or progress. Here's an opportunity to be a part of suggesting ways that the county can develop as technology and society continues to change. AI, for instance, was a science fiction subject 20 years ago when the last comprehensive plan was developed. Now, modern agriculture is incorporating AI processes to control the cost of inputs, to help make processing plants more efficient. Autonomous vehicles will soon become an everyday means of transportation, not just on the freeways across our county, but on the county roads of our incorporated areas. Technology continues to change everyday lives. Manufacturers becoming more efficient and automated, bringing higher wages through higher productivity. It was only a couple of years ago that there were only a couple of manufacturers in the county with robotic equipment on their manufacturing floor. Now, it is the rare organization that hasn't adopted some form of automation. Most of the schools in the area have a robotics team. The future employees, the talent that these companies are looking to attract are adopters of this technology. They're familiar with and use AI, for instance. The County Comprehensive Plan is an opportunity to engage with the members of our community for real answers on how these changes should be incorporated into the county. We'll continue to work with our regional partnership on leveraging, leveraging their access to, for regional traction, regional housing initiatives, town attraction, per capita wage increase. One of the meetings that we sponsor every quarter is the County Development for the Future. At the last County Development for the Future meeting, we polled leaders from across the communities in the county to get a sense of what infrastructure was lacking or needed to be addressed to accommodate future growth. We'll continue to pursue these discussions to try to find areas that communities can work together to improve. Couple the long-term initiatives. We're still continuing to meet and engage with employers through the challenges that are facing and other benefits of the BRNE processes, is introducing community leaders and industry leaders to one another, giving each an insight into the challenges that each face. We'll be redeveloping the entrepreneurial ecosystem that spawned Hoosier Tire, American Container, US Granules, and other homegrown industries. We're going to be helping the communities of Marshall County prepare for added populations, additional employment, things that require additional services and infrastructure. And, and a big one for us is the quality of life. Areas of continual improvement that will track industry, workforce, and investment. Quality of life improvement is not one-and-done process. It is continual assessment of the current quality of life and how it can be improved upon. Continue to strive for excellence, knowing perfection is unattainable and mediocre is unacceptable. Any questions?
Your housing shortages, what, what numbers were you showing for housing shortages in Marshall County?
Right, for me, they are showing, I believe, it was in the, just over a thousand over the next 10 years.
The interesting part is, because you know, that's, that's what I do.
Right.
The average prices of properties in this county are at about the $265,000 range now. So if you take that average wage that we have, less than $25 an hour, good luck with that.
Right.
So, you know, I'm not saying you're not doing a good job.
No, and that is.
I'm just, I'm just saying that it's going to take two incomes plus to be able to be able to sustain that. What we see in the market is the houses that are available out there that are in that $200,000 and less are the ones that move like hotcakes, even with the higher interest rates. And we're hoping that those interest rates will come down. But, you know, it just, you know, if you get, if you get a loan now at 7%, you're lucky. I just closed one, and it was just shy of nine. But anyway, hopefully, we'll get, you know, the funny part about this, Greg, all, all due respect to you guys, okay? But remember the question that I had about, you know, the decreasing population in Marshall County, but yet the housing shortages that we have in the county, it's kind of an oxymoron. It doesn't really make sense to me because the numbers of people that are out there that are looking for houses, it's a real number, you know, regardless of what your census tells you. And, and I, and I know that there's a shortage there because I work it every day, but I'm just hoping that more and more industry comes into this county that can put good jobs out there so that people can afford to make a living here.
Yeah. The night, the thing about that $25 an hour, I was, that's one of the things that we take under consideration when it comes to incentivizing. Sometimes I get pushback on, why aren't you bringing industry, you know, that, that pay? I'll give you one, for instance, is that I had a furniture manufacturer contact me, wanted to locate here, wanted 200 employees at $15 an hour. I said, you're welcome to come here, sir, but I don't think you'll find two other employees at $15 an hour, and I certainly won't incentivize anybody to come here and pay $15 an hour. In the previous one, my limit was about $20 an hour. With this average wage, it'll be $25 an hour, that if they're not paying at least $25 an hour, we won't talk to them about incentives. They're more than welcome to come, you know. I will help them come, but I'm not going to incentivize anybody to come at low wages.
Well, your fast food places pay.
Right.
That $15 an hour.
Exactly.
It's just, it's been like, only a year ago, I was in Warsaw, because the majority of my family lives in Cozyasco County, and one of the burger places east of town, they were advertising hires at 20 bucks an hour coming in. And, you know, I know it's a totally different environment because of the industries and everything that's available there. But I can't help but think, and I know that this would be way before you were even here, but I, I think we have missed out on some tremendous opportunities over the past 30 years that we probably should have capitalized on. But we got to the point, some people, not myself, but some people got to the point where they were intimidated by the higher-priced jobs that were coming in because they were afraid that the current workforce would lose their employees, but that's, that's another story for another time.
No, I've, I've heard that before, and that's something I, I want, one of the things I heard from the commissioners was, what, what I always call a pay-to-play, and that's another process I don't take a part in, you know, is that I'm here to do a service for Marshall County. Marshall County Economic Development Center takes a lot of, most of our operating budget is provided by the communities. I honestly, I'm just here for the best of the communities, you know. I don't pressure anybody to join our organization to get my incentives.
Well, if we didn't believe in it, we would not contribute personally, right?
Right.
Have you, have you had any of the organizations, local businesses that give in to Marshall County Economic Development? Kind of steer you in a direction not to bring in companies that could steal from their workforce?
I've heard that from, from, anecdotally, from a couple. I've also heard from people that don't necessarily contribute to our organization for that reason. You know, they'll say, why should I support you when you want to bring in jobs that are paying more than I'm paying?
Right.
And I, and I just tell them that, you know, what I do is for the benefit of the county at whole, and I truly deeply believe that a rising tide rises all ships, you know, and that I, you know, manufacturers that operate in a, in a quality environment get a quality return.
Sure.
But you know, the reality there is, some people are cheap at $30 an hour, and other people are expensive at 15. So it depends on what you're contributing.
Right. Yeah, and I mean, and, and some of their business models, you know, can afford more than others, you know, it's, it's just the way they run their business.
Is that $25 an hour just for full-time employees, or is that?
That's a full-time employee. That's the average wage, too, you know, that, that's, takes into account a lot of.
I was going to say, on the other end, you know, when I'm at Woody's, and there's some special needs individuals who bag groceries, I know they're probably not making $25 an hour, but I appreciate them, and that's.
Yes.
Right.
I don't want to eliminate their job either.
Right. But, you know, in order to incentivize, you know, because those incentives do cost the, the public money, and, and what we want to incentivize is an increase in wages across the board.
I think, too, to kind of add in a gem, even if you try to build affordable housing or single dwellings, you can't really build inexpensively.
When you're doing speculative building, it's in the range of $200 a square foot.
Yeah.
So when you go custom, you're $275 to $300 per square foot. A little 1,000-square-foot house, you see how much money it is. So then you wonder what's driving the prices of the existing houses. If it's safe, sound, sanitary, it's going to be sold, and especially if it's under the $200,000 mark, you know.
One of the interesting, if you take the two studies and, and put them alongside each other and look at them, the one study did look at the physical inventory of what is available and what the demand is looking like, you know, so these are, they're talking more what should be built and what price ranges. The other one was looking at what is in the way of getting affordable housing for people, you know, that more like wages, what are the wages in the county? How is that affecting what, what housing is being available? So it was an interesting, two studies together.
On a, on a random note, because I'm just thinking about this, but I know some employers offer really good benefits and others don't. Is there a way to calculate what their, like, total value per hour is?
Oh, sure.
Companies?
That's taken into our study, and we cooperate with the regional partnership on an hourly wage and benefits study, and they break that down by how many employees each organization has and what benefits they're offering. That's all accessible on there. The, the, the term that they like to use is the employer of choice, and when you had a lot of turnover on, on employees, now that, some of that's getting, taking care of, and they're doing a better job of that retention. But, I mean, it was a tough lesson for some of them to learn that, yeah, it, it pays to offer bene, benefits.
Oh, yeah.
You know.
I could see that $15 an hour job with excellent health insurance being a grade above a $30 an hour job where you don't have.
And, and what we do is we ask, you know, that, benefits and wage combined, where, where are you at? So, yeah.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Hildebrand?
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thanks for coming in and updating us.
Moving on to subcommittee reports, it's a new agenda item I asked, and Highway Committee, did you guys meet? Any, any ideas?
Scheduled for this Wednesday.
This Wednesday?
Yes.
Okay. Well, hear back from you next month, it looks like.
Yes.
Budget and Finance Committee, that's my committee, we did not meet. Job classification, who's cheering that?
Probably me. We have not met yet.
You haven't met.
It opens up in February for reclassifications, February through April, and we work closely with Jennifer from HR, and we have not been, yeah, she's excellent. We have not been, received any notifications that there's anything that's necessary for review yet. But I've heard that there may be some things coming down the pipe, so when that happens, then we will schedule a meeting.
Okay, it's still early in the year. All right. Okay, let's move on to some council items. We have some additional appropriations to consider. In the general fund, the sheriff is looking for a $969.50 additional for a vehicle repair. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Most of my, Mr. Masterson, second by Mr. Patterson. Is there discussion? Seeing none, those in favor of the appropriation request will say aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion is approved. Q and Bridge is requesting $122,000 for machinery and equipment. It's a pretty healthy fund. To purchase a Viewmare Vec Jeteric unit to improve the safety while digging. I think Jason had actually briefed us on this before. Is there discussion? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Cox, and who's it, second by Mr. Gorski. Is there discussion? Those in favor of the additional appropriation will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Bridge Fund is also looking for $115,000. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Cox, second by Mr. Patterson. Is there discussion? Seeing none, those in favor of the appropriation will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We can take these next six or seven en masse. Pre-trial Grant Fund, wages for Justice Intake Officer, $48,947, wages for probation officer, $54,107, player social security benefits, $7,883.64. Perf, $11,542.05, group health insurance, $23,994.31, group life, $184, staff training, $500, totaling $147,158. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Masterson, seconded by Mrs. Cox. Is there discussion? Those in favor of the additional appropriation will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion has passed. We have a lot of transfers. Members of the public, I've gone over these. I'm sure most of the members have gone over. We're not taking them lightly. So we are going to look at the Circuit Court. She wants a transfer of Unified Law Library into Equipment Maintenance and Repair, $2,187.20. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Johnson, second by Mrs. Cox. Is there discussion? Seeing none, those in favor of the transfer will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have eight or nine transfers from the 176 MDH Fund into the 173, I'm sorry, 1173, restricted, that'd be 1176 to 1173. Of the following, wages overtime, $10,000, wages area leaders, $320,000, wages foreman, $27,000, heavy equipment operators, $240,000, employer perf, $70,000, operating supplies, $10,000, a two-minute, $600,000, paint, $20,000, road signs, $20,000, player social security, $40,000, group health insurance, $40,000, vehicle maintenance supplies, $200,000. Again, these are just transfers. Is there discussion on any of the transfers? Is there a motion to approve all these en masse?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gorski, second by Mr. Patterson. Is there discussion? Seeing none, those in favor of the transfers en masse will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Medical benefits. We have one, Occident to Sharks of $60,000. Again, it's a transfer. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Cox, and second by Mr. Masterson. Is there discussion? Seeing none, those in favor of the transfer of $60,000 will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. More transfers from the CDB Owner Occupied Rehabilitation Project. Okay, from multiple accounts, you can see them in front of you. Home number 12 to Program Administrative Services, $3,786. Home number 12 also to home number 10, Center Street, $231.44. Home number 12 to home number 11, $639.3. Home number 12 again to home number 16, $713.12. Home number 14 to home number 16, $499.23. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Cox, second by Mrs. Johnson. Is there discussion? Those in favor of the transfers en masse will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. COVID insurance reimbursement transfer from contractual to other capital outlays for building, $20,567.73. Training to other capital outlays building, $4,999.99. Putting an advertisement to the same fund, other capitals outlays and building, $4,634.99. Supplies to other capitals outlays building, so $68,262,31. I believe this is to help move money around for a building that, that's made get purchased. So those in favor, I'm sorry, is there discussion on the transfers? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion to approve the transfer by Mr. Patterson, second by Mrs. Cox. Is there discussion? Chair sees none. Those in favor of the transfers will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. I got to get caught up now. I gotta get caught up now. Before the minutes, uh, we have an ordinance, uh, to establish, uh, a new fund name. It's Ordinance 2025-51. You see it before you on the monitors. Is there discussion or a motion?
I make a motion that we accept Ordinance 2025-5, Parenthetical 1.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion made by Mrs. Cox, second by Mr. Patterson, is there discussion? Those in favor of the motion establishing the new fund, 9016, will say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Minutes from the last meeting. I trust.
Make motion to.
To approve that, yes. Motion by Mrs. Johnson to approve the minutes from the January 9th meeting, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Masterson, is there discussion? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion will say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. We have an invoice for Mr. Labin. In the total of $2,600, uh, $605. You have the invoice, uh, in front of you, I hope. Is there a motion? Motion by Mrs. Cox, second by Mr. Patterson, is there discussion? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion will say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Resolution to express interest in the purchase of specified real property, the Bowen Building. Resolution 2025-2. Just as a disclosure, I had Section 3 added to some of the drafts that were floating around. Uh, we made a commitment to fund the $200,000 balance in the event that the Health Department couldn't do it. And that's the section I added, I think it's pretty, uh,
That's what we talked about.
explanatory, what's that?
That's what we talked about.
That's what we talked about, we, and we approved that in, in, uh, in spirit.
It's two years, not four.
Yeah, we, we wanted two, or four years, but the Bowen folks are wanting to get done in two years. But, you know, it's still basically free interest and, uh, still a good deal, so.
Save 7%.
Okay. You have the resolution before you, is there a motion to approve?
I would gladly make that motion.
Okay. Mrs., Mrs. Johnson gladly makes the motion. Mr. Patterson seconds her glad motion. And those in favor, is there discussion? Those in favor of approving Resolution 2025-2 will say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. We're getting near the end. There's a couple items we're going to discuss, but public input, any members of the public want to discuss anything? We are having a work session approximately 15 minutes after we adjourn. Angie has something.
It's the email from the clerk that we discussed earlier.
Okay.
I think she's looking for support and she could not be here, from my understanding of the email.
Okay, okay, thank you. Just support, right? I mean, that's what you mean?
She's looking for, for, yeah, support to have an additional at the next meeting. Uh, they, I know that they were down, uh, staff members, uh, I think at least one, if not two. They did some arranging last year, but if I understood her correctly, this is to help with their, um, records.
This is the records one? Because I've been from the first meeting. I think this is for the speeding tickets. Collection.
I have been put on this.
I've been working with Jenny, because I'm her point of contact.
She does have a former employee that's knowledgeable about software program. She's requesting $10,000 here, which may not take 10,000, it could be less. The employee is really familiar with the software. They, they will be working with a collection company and the collection company is capital recovery. You know, some collection agencies take a percentage of what the outstanding bill and fines are. These folks will take the fine plus the original fees, any late fees. They will collect that and their fee will be 30% on top of those, so that does not come off of the money that's coming into the county. She checked with, uh, the Board of Accounts and that money could not come from her record perpetuation fund. It needed to come from somewhere else. And she will do everything she can to keep that request less than the $10, $10,000. But the outstanding numbers are in the $285,000 range of, of late fees and penalties and fines. Even if we only collect 40% of that, that would be $114,000. And the reason she needs this person is because they have to get everything ready on the software so that it can go to this recovery company. And then after that major work is done, then it's going to be very limited amount that would feed in. But she's going to go back 10 years. She won't be able to do 2024 because enough time has not elapsed on those late fees yet. But it would be 2023 and back. And, you know, even if they collect, hopefully they collect half of that, it'd be $142,500 coming in. And, um, I personally don't think that people that owe fees should be able to stiff you, uh, for an indefinite period of time. And our attorney can clarify this if I'm wrong, but typically if there is a lien, encumbrance or judgment and that judgment is not refiled within a, after 10 years is there, it will just fall off. So the responsibility is to refile those, we have more that are out there. But, um, I have a lot of faith in Jenny. I think she's doing a great job over there. She's very proactive, she has a staff that's a very friendly and competent staff. And I would give 100% support for what she's asking for here.
Okay, is there any other discussion on the requests?
I guess I just had more questions. Um, we don't have an election year, so my question was, is what are our election deputies doing? Could they not start that process? Um, and do you know, does, Angie, do you know what our part-time wage is? Is it like $17 an hour?
Uh, off the top of my head, I don't know.
I don't either, and I was just gonna look it up and I forgot.
It, it's a range and I believe it goes up to 18.
Okay.
But I'm not.
So we're looking at about 588 hours that can be used. And from what I understand is that person is just going to be gathering the information to send to the ta, to the, um, the tax col, or the, uh, the collection agency. Um, and I, I did reach out to our previous clerk because it read, the email read like nothing had been done with these collections. And our previous clerk said, yes, she had used two different collection agencies. So my concern is, we're going back 10 years and looking for 285,000, but those have already been pursued. Those have already been looked at. Um, a tax, or an, an agency has already went after and they have not paid. And there's really, I don't think there's really any consequences. Do you know, Marcel, is there any consequences if they don't pay like their, their ticket? Or if they don't pay their JV detention? Or is there anything that can be done?
It's just like, it hits your credit. I mean, there are consequences, but it, for, as far as the county, no. I mean, it's not like you take them to jail for not paying their fines.
Right, so there's really no reason for them to pay. So I guess my concern was, is we're going to invest $10,000 and what is the probability of us getting anything back? Since I think a lot of those have already been worked, I don't know.
Well, I mean, like Jim said, if you don't refile, they fall off. And what I've seen in my practice is, um, when somebody wants to buy a car or buy a house or refinance.
Then they can get the.
Then if they're there, then they'll pay them off because they're trying to get the credit up so that their interest rates are lower. So that, you know, they don't have these outstanding things. So, I mean, you'd be surprised, sometimes it takes a long time, but if they're there, they will sometimes get paid.
Okay, respectfully.
No, go ahead.
The former employee has the knowledge of the software that's up and running. So you could take someone else and train them, but you're going to be taking them away from what they normally do, okay? So the amount of money, okay, these judgments and liens that are out here, they'll notice a less pendance and then it becomes a judgment. If that person tries to buy a house or something, they will do a search on them in that county and it's going to red flag that up. And that indebtedness will either be paid off because there is no bank in America that's going to be secondary to a judgment or a lien on a property. So at some point, you know, you're going to get stiffed on a certain percentage, yes. But I do believe that if you do not go after the people to get the money and you let it drop off and you've only done it one or two times, I think it's worthwhile going forward. Now, no disrespect to anybody else that has run that office, okay? But I think sometimes when you get so lean and mean with your office that you have taken on a lot of work yourself, okay, not pointing any fingers, but you do a lot of work yourself and you have relied upon you doing work versus letting your employees do that. And it's kind of displaced someone and your work staff is now short. Now, all of a sudden, when it comes back and you have some jobs that need to be done, you are short on, on those folks. So whatever the part-time wages are, okay, it could not, she could not exceed 10,000 to begin with anyway. So after she's in here, even if it goes to 10,000 and even if we get back 20,000, we're ahead of that game. And that person is only going to be used for that particular function to do that. So we can agree to disagree.
No, it's fine, it's fine.
But I really, I really think that this should be approved for Jenny Bennett because nothing is worse than someone having a fine or a penalty put against them and they thumb their nose at you and they go on and the law-abiding person goes out there and you hound them and they pay. So where's the fairness? You know what I'm saying? So I think they owe it, we need to go after it. And if you can't collect it, then it just goes to the next step.
And this is just for speeding tickets? This is not other fines or judgments that haven't been paid?
Well, it sounds like, it sounded to me like there was more than speeding tickets.
There is, yeah, I don't know.
The 285, I thought, didn't the email say that that was, uh, just for traffic violations?
Well, for several years, she's reviewed, reviewed the outstanding traffic tickets. Um, there are criminal fines and, and criminal fees.
And I think that's separate.
Yeah, but, but the reality of that is, whatever the amount of money is that's out there, that's outstanding. You know, it's, so they're going to thumb their nose at you. Okay, so Nicole, you decide you don't want to pay your real estate taxes, you just thumb your nose at them and see what happens.
Yeah.
The lien would go on your house, eventually it'll go, you'll pay one way or the other.
It sounds like this could pay itself back pretty easily.
Oh, absolutely. And you know what? Nothing ventured, nothing gained, but it's also like, whatever vendor you hire to do something, they're not all equal.
Right.
Surprise, the dream's better than the reality, right? So hopefully this is somebody that has a proven track record and, uh, whatever you folks think, but I would love to support it.
To kind of piggyback off of this, if I'm remembering correctly, two or three years ago, I believe the clerk's office did cut an employee that retired and tightened up their ship as well. So, I mean, I think as far as extra wages, I think they, the previous clerk had kind of done that. So I don't, I don't know if there would be additional there if it's that lean. So I don't know, I could be wrong, but I thought that was two or three years ago that they reduced an employee to save wages.
Well, and the money is when they come back in, they go back into the general fund. So the general fund is the one that's going to, to gain whatever the excess is there, you know?
Okay. I know Mrs. Johnson has a meeting at 6 o'clock, so we have to probably move this question. Is there a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Is there a second? Second. Okay. Motion by Mr. Patterson, uh, second by Mr. Gorski, is there discussion?
Mr. Shattick.
Oh.
I made the motion.
Mr. Masterson made the motion, seconded by Mr. Gorski. Yeah, Mr. Gorski. The chair rules, Mr. Gorski. Is there further discussion? Those in favor of the motion will say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Now we'll get back to public input, is there public input? Again, we have a work session here, uh, following the, the meeting. Uh, Mr. Labin, next meeting will be doing an attorney report. Uh, and I do want to discuss meeting times because we had talked about that last time. Uh, there was some, uh, discussion about moving it to later. Um, Monday is a day for me personally that will work well. I'm, I'm going to be very busy starting next month, uh, and Mondays are a day that work for me. Uh, it's not about me.
It works best for the auditor's office too.
Okay, but it's about, you know, doing the best for everyone, so, um, thoughts, meeting times?
I got feedback from, from the public and they were asking that we move our, our, our meeting time back from 4:30 to something that they can, um, attend or, um, jump on live or, um, so I guess I would like to make a motion that we move our meeting time to 5:30 on Mondays.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there discussion?
I'd just like to agree with Nicole, the later time is what I heard a lot of feedback about.
Okay. And Mr. Labin, I think we'll have him for 45 minutes and if there's anything urgent, we can move him up in the agenda. Uh, so he's here to give us his legal expertise. Um, we could also meet with Mr. Labin, but, uh, is there any further discussion on the motion?
And the time is?
5:30, second Monday of the month, okay. Seeing no more discussion is, uh, there's a motion on the table to move it to 5:30. Those in favor of the motion, uh, will say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. That's all I've got, uh, is anything else good for the order? Anybody else? Okay, motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
I second.
Motion by Mr. Masterson, second by Mrs. Cox. Those in favor of adjourning will say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, we are adjourned.